Ms. Roman wanted to say something on item one before we get to vote on that. Roman, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is just a brief comment and I thought it might be of interest for people around this body because this report was brought up a couple of questions for me. So I just thought I'd share these facts or factoids, I guess. The Board of Transportation Commissioners wrote this report, according to their letter, after reading hundreds of complaints from residents about RVs. They then created a subcommittee and they spent time working on putting together a report about how to address RVs better here in the city of Los Angeles. And I was eagerly looking forward to reading these findings because RVs are both a growing sector of our homeless population and also are a unique sector of our homeless population needing different kinds of resources in order to be able to address homelessness and to move people indoors and then move RVs off the streets and sometimes more resources than people who are living in tent encampments. I was interested also to note that of the sites looked at in the report, half of them were in Council District Four. And I was, again, excited because I'm really excited about knowing more about my district and ensuring that we're addressing issues, but also a little surprised because my district doesn't have half of the RVs in L.A. And so I was curious about how they prioritize which areas to look at and, you know, where they made their findings from. And it started to make me want to look at where commissioners are coming from for these commissions that we appoint across the entire city and where complaints that are going to commissions are coming from. I couldn't get information on the latter, but I did want to share with this body that we have a number of commissions that help us govern the city. And not all council districts are represented equally on these commissions. So Council District Four has 11% based on kind of a rough calculation of all commissioners that sit on city commissions. And there are districts that are represented on this body that have less than 1% of commissioners. And I just wanted to share that with everyone. Again, not because I did not think that this report was valuable. I'm always grateful for attention and guidance for issues in my district. But I did want to say that if we want our commissions to be governing the city with an eye towards governing the entire city, we should be looking at who is serving on our commissions, what they care about, what their priorities are, and ensuring that we have representation from across the entire city. And I also just wanted to say that in homelessness in particular, a complaint-based response to homelessness is what got us into the situation that we're facing today where even when homelessness was a crisis in places like Skid Row, tens of thousands of people were living there on the streets in certain areas of the city but not others. We waited until homelessness spread across the entire city to be able to address it effectively and to address root causes and to build shelter. And I just think that we have to make sure that we are thinking about how we prioritize intervening in the challenges that face us and how those issues come to our attention overall. So I just thought that was interesting and worthy of sharing with the whole body. So thank you all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Roman. Okay, we have item eight where Mr. Price is going to recuse himself. We can take that up. Mr. Price, are you going to recuse yourself on item eight? Why don't we do that now? We'll wait till Mr. Price is out of the room.
I would like to speak on everything possible.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
For the item number 24, I am here to support Councilmember Kevin DeLeón. I really appreciate our Councilmember Kevin DeLeón is doing something to improve the traffic safety, traffic safety. Including the traffic safety, it is, you know, something happens on the bus, there's an assault, that is considered a traffic safety issue. If drivers are continue to doing those street takeover, that's considered as a traffic safety issue. And then if there's people are on the sidewalk, a car run over the bicycle, bicycle cut in front of the car, that's a traffic safety issue concern. And I'm glad that the City Councilmember Kevin DeLeón is doing something, asking for additional funding for, to solve this issue. And then I'm glad that we are doing something to make the situation better. Thank you very much, Councilmember Kevin DeLeón. And now I would like to move on to item number 25. dating violence in the city of Los Angeles. So I sometimes in the city of Los Angeles, I go on a date and then somehow I always get assaulted, get discriminated against because of my three-inch size. So I really wish, I want to call on stop discrimination on the three-inch shrimp in Next item, that'll be item number 27. the city of L.A. I really wish I can call a stop violence against the three-inch shrimp in the Figueroa. And I wish everyone can respect a three-inch shrimp the same way they respect a 24-inch Sergeant Duarte. Doesn't matter if you are 24 inches like Sergeant Duarte or if you are three inches like me, we are human. We deserve the same amount of respect and the safety. Thank you so much.
Your time has expired. Next speaker.
Speaker, which item would you like to speak on?
Good morning, Honorable Team. My name is Julian Alexander. I would like to speak on point 22, 24, and public comment.
You'll have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
If I could request, I do, I'm, I have high IDHD and I have autistic. All of this is inappropriate. Can you please commend the same respect? I cannot talk. If you look at the video conversations of my last presentation last week, I was not able to finish my speech. Team members, attention, please reduce your voice.
Speaker, you should speak to the items. You can speak to that and general public comment.
It's unfair. So per point 24, L.A. Dream Foundation has worked with geospatial technology and has partnered in the past with Esri to provide geospatial services in accordance with the city and different nonprofit institutions. We would like to advise that the Value Program is a workforce program that can be utilized to support what is being requested on not only point 24, now my time is lapsing, but also on point 15 on the agenda pertaining to any additional owned city land. What the Value Program is able to create is a community education attainment network. We have already partnered with professors that teach geospace and spatial designing at our community colleges. We are already partnered with nonprofits who are bicycle building institutions and they create safe spaces for bicyclists in order to fix their bikes at a reduced cost. Your ideas are grand from points on the agenda and the points that we were unable to discuss, 10, 12 to 13. What the city is not including is the community because the community knows how to make it accessible. Your overall, the fact that everyone behind this side is getting paid means that you are disqualified in understanding that concept. Now moving over to my public comment, allow me to utilize, oh, I didn't, that, those three seconds, okay. So three, two, one. I'm here to consolidate understanding and support for the community. Utilizing this platform, Councilmembers, I extend to all of you the opportunity to join the new community coalition, the Greater Los Angeles Community Partnership Agreement. You all have a copy of it in your emails. The city attorney as well has a copy. The effort is to, of this coalition is to consolidate resources effectively, not unlike in 2020 when it's on record, when members of this actual council were utilizing their position to take and gerrymander their own districts. Kevin DeLeón, Ms. Hernandez, those individuals are still in your team. The disrespect that we face as a constituency is apparent. City agents will partner with community partner Adrian Foundation to effective community programs and redevelop communal co-op and communal divisions within their offices. Kids need to be here. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Counselor, just public comment.
You'll have one minute.
Concorian, you're a parasite. I'm entitled to Braille, which the city clerks has been kind enough to provide me. You've been a barrier. You've said that I'm faking it. You said you had one of your people contact Department of Motor Vehicles about my blue placard. You contacted Access and you think it's real funny. You're a nobody. You're a loser. You're just a parasite. How dare you, as a matter of right, I have the right to Braille. Do you know what the city clerks did because of your nonsense? They actually went out of their way and purchased a Braille machine so they would make sure that people like you can't cock-block it anymore. I know you don't care. You're just a shriveled little old man. You're not even an altercocker. You're a loser. And I hope you get cancer in the mouth, you fucking asshole.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Speaker, which item would you like to speak to?
Yeah, public comment and closed session item.
You'll have one minute for item 31 and one minute for general public comment. Please start with item 31.
Well, with the closed session item, I want to talk about the monies that the city is now passing and just gave away for attorney fees on the case against Ben Camacho and Stop LAPD Spying Coalition. My name is Hamid Khan with Stop LAPD Spying Coalition. And that signifies the complete failure of this body to rein in the city attorney's office.
Sorry, Speaker, that item, I thought you were talking about item 31. That item has already been voted on, so you can speak to it in general public comment. So we can move you to general public comment.
So that has, so the city attorney is completely unhinged, just engaging in unconstitutional activity. The whole office is up in arms of the city attorneys, where like whistleblowers are speaking out. She's bringing in a law firm to investigate where three partners of that law firm donated to her political campaign. And this is about the BS that she's pulling where this information that was released for Watch the Watchers and the pictures and photographs and city, and the cops roster, the city released it themselves. The court approved it and six months later, when it's published, the city attorney goes and files a lawsuit which constitutional scholars have spoken against, which, which media companies have spoken up against. And the, and the city, the case was filed on behalf of the city. But then the city dismissed the case itself and now they're paying up $300,000 for attorney fees. So this is the kind of shenanigan that's going on and this is the kind of complete failure of this body to keep an eye on one of their, one of their colleagues who's just engaging in completely frivolous, unhinged and unconstitutional activity.
My name is Matias Kidan, also with the Stop LAPD Spying Coalition, speaking on item 33, the case of the city of Los Angeles versus Ben Camacho et al., our organization being et al. And yeah, just kind of highlighting the fact that this payout is due to the fact that the city attorney pursued a frivolous, ridiculous lawsuit that other organizations jumped in. First Amendment attorneys jumped in, specialists jumped in and said, this is a ridiculous lawsuit based in fiction. And yet this city council, the mayor's office, the district attorney, all supported her narrative that we were somehow endangering police officers by creating a community resource and republishing, again, publishing again documents that had already been made public. And so, you know, our resources now, resources that are here, Monica Rodriguez, Bamon, that can be used for, you know, infrastructure or the like, are being used for this frivolous lawsuit. And y'all are just not reining this in. Y'all are allowing the city attorney to dole out violence willy-nilly. We already see reports of the city attorney abusing her employees, drinking on the job, but this council hasn't done anything to rein that in. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
On Wednesday, August 14th, 2024, the World Health Organization announced a brand-new global health emergency over MPox, according to the WHO's website. From January 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2024, MPox caused 208 deaths across 116 countries. That's a global death rate from this virus, which now have a global emergency over, of approximately 83 people per year. If you don't understand by now that this is a scam, I really encourage you to dispel the notion that this is a MAGA conspiracy theory by consulting lefties like Max Blumenthal, Naomi Wolf, Jimmy Dore. These are not the all-right white supremacists you want to make the medical freedom movement out to be. And I just want to say to all 15 of you wannabe Mussolinis, you can mandate whatever the fuck you want, we're not complying. Thank you so much.
Next speaker.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
General public comments.
You'll have one minute.
This is about the Palestinians. Who are the Palestinians? And what is their history for the past, the past 100 years?
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Well, all the goddamn fucking items. You just spoke to the pumpkin head.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you, DEI hire. So which one you got here? Let's see. Let's see here. Not many things to talk about and so much time to waste. Hurry, turn those goddamn pages. Okay. Item, there we go, 22. Yes, I believe so. Let's see here. 22, Hugo Stalin Martinez. Ewan McGregor. We're gonna give him a star in the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Let's see, what did, what did this asshole do? Let's see here. Oh, wasn't that the guy that played a young Obi-Wan Kenobi? Why, that's Moni Kow's favorite movie. She loves Star Wars. Yes. All costs are to be paid by the permitee. No, DEI hire, all costs are paid by Ewan McGregor. Please amend the motion. You support it? Of course, yes. Then we have CD11, the evil terrible one. Yes. That's right. Tracy Beach, known as Tracy Park, doing her best to show what she's all about, the Westerly Terminus. Yes. I believe that follows the LAX Airport, a certified shithole airport. But again, you'll keep pouring money into it. Do what Goat Puppet would do, pull those down, LAX, and turn it into an amusement park. And if you want to fly, today's meeting is sponsored by the Burbank Airport for your flying needs. Now 24, let's see, traffic safety improvements for Kevin DeLion, who's not paying any goddamn attention today. Oh, there, is he paying attention? Then I'm going to oppose your item if you're not paying attention. I move that all the money from item four, $200,000, go away from Kevin DeLion, over to Eunice Hernandez at CD1 so she can get the money. Thank you. Yes, you could take a drink there. And today's drinking game word is lompoc. Then number 25, the Paralympics, photography exhibits. Yes, I will try my best to speak like a Paralympic for the other item. Oh, shit. What? I'll go. The Paralympics for brave people like me, I'm going to jog five days to cover one mile because I can't compete with the normal people. That was well done. Thank you, I support it. And then we get to the final thing. The city council's gonna be on recess next week, Eunice. It's gonna be on another fucking recess there. Isn't that fucking terrible? What's Kevin gonna do with all that free time next week? He's gonna have the next four years off if he don't start debating his opponent. And then, of course, now we get to Current Price, everybody. We went to his trial yesterday. Ready? December the 6th, Current Price has to return to face his 10 felony charges. Let's give him a hand. Oh, hold on. That's right, beautiful. And of course, we know that Current Price has been married three times, but he only has two wives. Yes, how can that be? And then, of course, if you pan the camera over here, you'll see useless Imelda Padilla who just shook the hand of the big fat bucket head. Fuck you, bucket head. Do your job right.
Your time has expired. There are no other speakers here in the John Farrow Council chambers, so let's go next to callers on the phone.
I will speak to all items and general public comment.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
All right, starting off with item 22, that's putting Ewan McGregor on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. I mean, Ewan McGregor, if Obi-Wan Kenobi, I mean, you know, it's okay, but I mean, we do have a lot of stuff the city could be doing right now. We have item 24, that's traffic safety improvements from Kevin DeLeón. Now Kevin's trying to make you, make you think that he's doing something about traffic safety. But, you know, yesterday while in a district, while he was, you know, harassing unhoused people and at Torini Plaza, you know, that they, it was like a whole crash where like an off-duty officer caused a major, ten-day pedestrian between his and another car while speeding down the street in his district. And, you know, they, they didn't really, they took a while to provide any help and, except for the cop, of course. But, but yeah, cops are causing crashes in KDL's district. So yeah, that's traffic safety in this district. Let's move on to item, let's see. We have item 29, that's lighting up City Hall from KDL, nothing from DeLeón. And we don't really need to light up City Hall right now anyway. We do have on the continuation agenda, you open it back up for comment, 36, stop harassing unhoused people, stop towing people's cars and RVs like that. Like, like stop harassing unhoused people. Why don't you get housing services on housed people? I mean, you know, it's that simple. All right, now, let's move on back, let's go back to item 25. That's a Olympics photography exhibit on the 10th floor of City Hall. Now I wonder if this exhibit is going to, oh, going to feature some of the, of the recent news regarding the chair of LA 28, Casey Wasserman? Is it gonna cover like all the various affairs that he had? You know, that, it's so bad that Billy Eilish has dropped out of his agency because he, and this is who's running LA 28. So, you know, Casey Wasserman had all kinds of affairs with his own employees and, and none of you seem to be overly concerned about that. So, I mean, it seems like you should be. I mean, like, this is really concerning that this is something that the city is doing here and supporting. All right, let's go on to general comments. We have, so Hugo, why are you, why are you filming people and taking photos of people with your phone in, in the, during the meetings? It sounds like you were doing that to Stacy a couple weeks ago. You were filming her or taking photos of her with your personal phone. What, that's just weird. Like, like, why are you doing that? And, you know, you're not the first one. You're following in the footsteps of Gil Cedeo. Congratulations. Gil Cedeo, Mitchell Farrell, Kevin DeLeón, Paul Corretts, I think is doing it too. Like, like, this is weird, taking photos, videos of people during the meeting? Like, you know, I mean, why are you doing that? This is weird. And you should be prepared for CPRAs because they're subject to CPR now, the public record. Like, why, why are you taking videos and photos of people during the meetings with your personal phone? Like, that's a good question. Like, you know, you have an answer for that?
Thanks very much. Your time has expired. Next caller, please.
General public comment, number 11. We were talking about LAPD. 2020, Monica Rodriguez was anti-defund the police. Now she wants to give them full power to go ahead and hire her own, their own. Kind of funny, my brother-in-law's LAPD, so is her brother-in-law. So for her to be speaking up to give them power to bring in the people that she wants or they want, we're going back to 87 Rampart problems. Everything you got there is problematic if you don't have a check and plus system. Who's checking who? You want to give them full reign to hire who they want? The only reason they do what they do is because they're not financially held liable for what they do. Or else they'd be in jail, a lot of them, not all of them. You had with a lot of great officers, but not all of them. Hold them accountable, see how far it goes. God bless LA.
Okay, good morning. I will speak at this clown show on all available items and general public comment.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you so much. Item 22, in my opinion, should be renamed the Walk of Shame and should receive a no vote if indicted embezzling criminal Current Price and unelected Heather Hutt are allowed to vote. This Walk of Shame item should include additional funding from the city to include a Walk of Shame star at the same location for both Current Price and Sleazy Dawson, legendary corruption and Grekorian homeless generating abilities. In my opinion, the Walk of Fame star honoring Ewan McGregor should include every name of the five to eight homeless people murdered by this corrupt council daily. Item 23 is a vacation proceeding and CD11 by racist Demetri Park and should receive a no vote if indicted criminal Current Price, unelected Heather Hutt, and Sleazy Marquesi Dawson are allowed to vote due to corruption. In my opinion, this vacation proceeding of this city property will end up as the personal property of embezzling Current Price. Item 24 is a corrupt transfer of $200,000 by racist Kevin Louis Batton Leo and genocide Bob Bloomfield. A no vote is demanded. Therefore, item 25 is a testament to just how pathetic Sleazy Marquesi Dawson and petty pink face Grekorian are. This motion is for Olympic signage on the 10th floor of Sleazy Hall when there are 60,000 homeless on our streets. In my opinion, this Olympic signage should not only highlight the Olympics, but should include the names of the three to eight homeless that will die in the city today due to their incompetence and corruption. I demand a no vote unless the signage is altered to do so. General public comment. The LA Sleazy Council is the most corrupt local government in the history of the United States, where petty pink face corrupt Armenian dictator Paul Kluklux Grekorian has indicted embezzling polygamist criminal Current Price and Sleazy Dawson voting daily with unelected Heather Hutt. The black community has zero representation from these incompetent corrupt sellouts. Self-serving indicted black, black Uncle Tom criminal members of this corrupt city council. I demand all their resignations. Dawson is now trying to sell the black community's unemployment office. Public black faces occupy 20% of this Sleazy Council, yet there is no representation for black people. Nearly 50% of the homeless, 50% of the incarcerated, 50% of the unemployed are black people. I demand all their resignations.
22, Ewan McGregor shouldn't get a star, not because he's a bad actor, but because you can trace all the issues with Star Wars back to him killing Darth Maul, which we all know really wouldn't have happened. 23, traffic, traffic safety.
In my opinion, this Olympic signage should not only highlight the Olympics, but should include the names of the three to eight homeless that will die in the city today due to their incompetence and corruption. I demand a no vote unless the signage is altered to do so. General Public Comment. The LA Sleazy Council is the most corrupt local government in the history of the United States where petty pink face corrupt Armenian dictator Paul Kluklux Grecoian has indicted and embezzling polygamist criminal Kern Price and Sleazy Dawson voting daily with unelected Heather Hutt. The black community has zero representation from these incompetent corrupt sellouts. Self-serving indicted black Uncle Tom criminal members of this corrupt city council. I demand all their resignations. Dawson is now trying to sell the black community's unemployment office. Public black faces occupy 20% of this Sleazy Council, yet there is no representation for black people. Nearly 50% of the homeless, 50% of the incarcerated, 50% of the unemployed are black people. I demand all their resignations.
22, uh, Ewan McGregor shouldn't get a star. Not because he's a bad actor, but because you can trace all the issues with Star Wars back to him killing Darth Maul, which we all know really wouldn't have happened. Uh, 23, traffic, traffic safety. Let's keep all of our cars and guards like Stacy safe. I think traffic safety is a great thing that's fairly overlooked these days. Uh, you know, I think people need to be safe at work and in council from perverts taking their pictures with their phones. And with Monica talking about the sidewalks, uh, why didn't all the dents before you put the sidewalks in? And you've had seven years and what else have you wasted money on? Uh, why don't you use some of those royalties from, uh, the gag ball to buy sidewalks? 25, uh, I agree with Shaniqua Figueroa on this. Very well said. Uh, 29, nothing against the Guatemalans. If, uh, you're eliminating City Hall for them, why not eliminate it for Smokin' Stan? Uh, 36, why not park some of those RVs in the mayor's neighborhood? She told people that they should, you know, adopt a homeless family. I think that she should, uh, lead by example and put some in her neighborhood and show people that there's nothing to fear and they won't cause any issues. Um, and it's all the policies that you guys in this room have voted for, for the years that brought all these RVs to LA. I guess that fit, that fits that now you're punishing the poor for their Democrats mistakes. Uh, general public comment. Um, what, what do all the people that you name have in common? Just think about that. Um, and I'm surprised that nobody talked about the young black man that was left with a traumatic brain injury after the Michael Brown 10-year anniversary protest. Why doesn't his black life matter? Eric Holder's DOJ says his hands weren't up and that he was charging the police. And I challenge anyone that's still promoting this false narrative to, uh, take a use of force course and see how they would react with a 6'4" 295 person rushing them. You guys can't even hold your tongue for a day when people call you names and, and don't listen to your instructions. Why don't you guys show the police how you can control the situation without raising their voices or using the other tools, uh, at their disposal? And, uh, at Smokin' Stan, we don't support violence if anybody's willing or nailing. Just to get that on the record. And, uh, Hugo, I think you owe Stacy and the other people you've been recording an apology. I, I think it's gross and it's not.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Your time has expired. That will close public comment on all agenda items and on, uh, general public comment as well. So with that, Mr. Clerk, what's available now for us to vote? I'm sorry, don't shout out and disrupt the meeting. I'm only, I'm only going to warn you once. People in the chambers will be silent while we proceed with the meeting. Otherwise, you'll be removed pursuant to Rule 12. Councilmember Lee, did you wish to be heard on this?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I think what is before us is good common sense policy that will without a doubt help restore order to our city streets. Resuming, uh, enforcement on vehicles which are stopped in peak hour lanes or no-stopping zones is a good start, but I know that there's more that we can do. I have an amendment, uh, before you today, which just expands this motion to also resume enforcement on, uh, parking restrictions that are already established, potus, noticed. These are not new laws or signs. It puts our city back to where we need to be and meets the, hopefully meets the expectations of the residents of our city, that we enforce the laws and rules that we already have on our books. I urge an I-vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Amen.
I just wanted to say that I think the original motion, which talked about peak hour travel lanes, um, and certain other specific locations seemed to be in line with discussions that we've had around movement of traffic and traffic safety and how we manage that across the entire city. With the amendments, this, uh, would essentially supersede all of the work that the city has been doing on addressing RV homelessness. Um, it essentially says that all of the other policies that have been developed by the CAO that have been put forward, uh, by Councilmember Rodriguez on how, uh, on, um, RV buyback on a citywide strategy that the city has passed last year and is looking to fund, that all of these are moot and that we're going to be moving towards another model. And so I think the amendment is overbroad and I would, uh, argue for a no vote because we need to have a holistic strategy on addressing RV homelessness. It is a unique kind of homelessness. Um, it requires specific resources. We have talked about what those resources are. We have planned for what those resources are. And we are working on putting together that citywide strategy. And I urge this council to stick to what we have been planning and to really plan in a thoughtful way that addresses both the needs for traffic safety on our streets as well as the needs of people experiencing homelessness.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is nothing, you know, we're not doing anything. Try to, uh, pull back what we've all been trying to do, uh, regarding the unhoused and people living in RVs. But there are certain situations in our neighborhoods where we have abandoned vehicles, where we have abandoned RVs, which this law does not change, does not make new laws. These are laws that are on the books that allow us to enforce so that we can take some of these abandoned vehicles off of our streets. And please, I, I believe we need to return to what the residents of the City of Los Angeles are expecting of the streets so that they are not overrun with a bunch of abandoned vehicles. This will allow us to enforce a lot of those things and I urge our I-vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Amen.
Sorry, I had a clarification because from the way that this is written, it is not clear that this is just for abandoned vehicles. So, I mean, I, this is a big amendment and I just want to say I would appreciate additional time to understand what the scope of this is and, um, to what vehicles this would actually apply.
Mr. Lee, do you want to address that issue?
Again, uh, all we're doing is enforcing the laws that are already on the books. We're not making anything new. This is just something that allows us to obviously enforce the rules that are on the books. That's simply it.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I have just a question about the actual enforcement piece. Right now, our DOT department is struggling to cover the work that it has to already do. With the budget that we just passed, we didn't give them any extra resources for enforcement. And so I ask this body, um, yes, these are laws that are on the books. Um, but do we even have capacity to enforce? Or are we playing lip service to our communities because we're not going to be able to follow through on the enforcement? Both if, you know, a significant number of these vehicles are RVs. We don't have enough garage space, uh, to tow those all. We're working on the recycling project. Thank you to Councilmember Rodriguez on that. Um, but that's going to take time to rev up. So I just, um, I just don't want us to be saying that we're going to do something yet really put no resources or capacity to actually making it happen.
I don't know if you heard me, uh, Council President. I'd like to call the question on this item.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Lee. But the call of the question is, um, not in order because there are members who have not spoken yet for a first time. So, um, Mr. Harris Dawson being among them.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, uh, Mr. Lee and Ms. uh, Ramon for this, uh, discussion. Uh, is someone from Transportation here that does enforcement? Well, you know, this, this raises big questions for me because the question it raises for me is who decided that we weren't enforcing the law? Uh, or what the rules are? Um, so, and it's, and it's very true, like, some streets you get parking violations. They give ticket after ticket after ticket. Another street, you will get towed and it's not at all clear to residents which is which. Uh, and so this to me makes it even more confusing than it was before because we're saying, we're passing a law to enforce the law that already exists. Um, and which means to me in some, at some point, there was a decision made about when the law was going to be enforced and when it wasn't. And it would be wonderful to know what that is and to let every, make, to make sure everyone knows, uh, what the rules of the road are. Uh, because what we see before us, it's, you know, these signs mean you could get a ticket. It means you could be towed. It means you, nothing might, maybe nothing happens. Uh, and it's, I don't think that's fair to anybody, uh, involved in this process.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. And Mr. Harris Dawson, we made the decision. Uh, this body made the decision when, as a result of COVID, uh, we said there was going to be zero enforcement in any of our streets. And there have been adaptations where that has applied or it hasn't. We have restrictions for oversized parking and high fire hazard severity zones, like in my district, which has gone up in flames three times and evacuated nearly half of my district. But then I see other areas that paint their curbs red. So it's unfortunately an inconsistent practice among members of this body that have leveraged the resources of the Department of Transportation and other, uh, city departments to do it. I think fundamentally what the question we have to ask ourselves, and I know, and this was a, a question that I raised because there was an injunction by Judge Carter that prohibited, prohibited us from me, from being able to do any enforcement at one time. And that was raised. I had asked for the city attorney to come back and give us some clear, uh, in fact, I introduced a motion because when that occurred, the city attorney's office never actually informed any of us that that had taken place, that he had lifted that injunction. So the bottom line, I think fundamentally what we have to ask ourselves, because this is a problem. It's an ongoing problem and it's being exercised by some and not by others. And it's an inconsistent practice across the city. And I will say, Ms. Hernandez, to your point, the Department of Transportation, uh, like even in areas that are legitimately enforceable areas, I had to personally call the Department of Transportation to come out and do enforcement in areas. And they're saying, well, we're under-resourced. However, they're not under-resourced when they go into certain neighborhoods. They only happened to be under-resourced when it came to mind. So they too have had a selective practice about where they're being responsive and it has been inconsistent and I have been frustrated by it. But it really makes us all look a fool. When we have a situation where we have posted no parking areas, we have posted no oversized parking for the hazardous conditions that I just described. And yet there are vehicles that are blatantly parking in these areas with zero enforcement. Concurrently, you can have a vehicle that is completely mobile. Someone perhaps maybe parked temporarily or maybe their meter expired. Boy, do we not, do we ticket them immediately. We don't miss a beat. And so my point is, is that we've got a whole, this is, this is just one of a bigger problem. But a lot of this, I'm not going to, you know, we're not, I'm not going to be like, I don't know how this happened. I will tell you how it happened and we have to own it. This is the lack of really comprehensive approaches to how we deal with this issue, layered and mired from, uh, policies that were adopted during COVID that we have intermittently redacted instead of comprehensively having the very real and hard conversations about how we address this. We have over 460 square miles of city streets. The reason why Judge Carter lifted it is because the areas that have been designated for no parking, for whatever safety reasons that it posed, there are still plenty of other miles of street where people can legally park. So that's, that's the real conversation. Now, I appreciate that there's perhaps deeper conversations that need to happen. Uh, this particular amendment is a bit of a copycat to something that I introduced previously. But I think we do have to have a real conversation about how we do this in a comprehensive and thoughtful manner that is engaging with all of our colleagues to address the issues that are before us all. Because right now we have a hit or miss enforcement tactic. And it runs afoul to the people who, again, are being overburdened and they're the ones getting hit with the tickets versus the ones that blatantly, uh, disobey the signage and will continue to park, uh, and, uh, and basically, you know, without, without any impact. And so we have a, we have a big problem on our hands. But I think there is a problem with how we've been managing it and, uh, and I, you know, I think it does warrant a more comprehensive conversation, but I understand the impetus for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Yaroslavski.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to start by saying that I agree that we as a city lose credibility when we don't enforce very visible rules that we have on the books. And so we need to figure out how to start to do that. I also want to note that I share concerns about LA DOT capacity. I can't get them to tow, uh, oversized vehicles that have been scheduled and set and noticed weeks in advance. So the capacity issue of DOT is point well taken, Councilwoman Hernandez. I, I don't know how this is going to be enforced and, and the last thing I want to do is pass another law that we can't enforce. RVs are a huge problem across the city. Um, RVs are mobile and so they move around. I think we need, um, enforcement that's, uh, consistent across the city so that we're not pushing people from one district to another. We need uniform enforcement across the city and we need a department or departments that have the capacity to actually do that enforcement. And we need places for people to go so they're not just shuttling around the city. I have a couple of questions, though, about this. Um, and I don't know if, uh, the city attorney's office can, can come up and answer some questions. Some of this is not for the city attorney's office, but questions that I would want to know before I would feel comfortable voting on this either way are, are first. How many more streets does this cover? What are we talking about in terms of what the added burden on enforcement would be to the city? Uh, I don't know if that can be answered here today, but I think that's important given that we're not enforcing what we already have. Um, two, does this cover occupied vehicles or is it only unoccupied vehicles? And how are we going to ascertain the difference between the two? Um, and then my third question is, and this is for the city attorney's office, uh, are there any search and seizure issues under the Fourth Amendment? And are we going to be in legal jeopardy by starting to tow vehicles that have people living in there? So, um, I appreciate Councilmember Lee, your frustration with the current situation and the desire to act and start to do something around this issue, which is incredibly frustrating for me as well. But I want to make sure that we're solving problems, um, and not creating new ones at the same time. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues. Uh, I would like to move that we move this amendment to the Transportation Committee as the Chair of Transportation is not here and as it sounds like there needs to be a deeper discussion on this item, particularly on how we're going to enforce.
Uh, that motion was seconded by Councilmember Ramon. Okay, so, um, a motion to refer to committee is not a debatable motion. So, uh, we can proceed to vote on that motion at this time. And if that motion does not garner eight votes, then we will continue with discussion about the underlying motion. So, um, the motion to refer the amendment to committee is now before us on that item. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Five ayes, nine noes.
The motion, Hernandez, Ramon, to refer to Transportation Committee fails.
Okay.
Could it be reconsidered or can my vote be documented as a yes?
Oh, yes. That does not change the outcome. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, so Councilmember Hernandez should be recorded as a yes vote on the Hernandez motion. Uh, so, uh, Councilmember McCloskey, followed by Councilmember Amen.
Thank you very much. Um, first of all, I'm really glad that we're debating something. It's our job. I'm glad that we're talking about these issues right here on the floor. As I read through this, um, what I see is an instruction to the Los Angeles Department of Transportation to tow any and all vehicles that are violating the law, existing law. I don't see an expansion of any designation or any law, the adoption of nothing new. I realize the language is jarring to say any and all, but that is actually the, on the books as the current rule, the law. It's like, if we, if the fire department came to us one day and said, we don't have enough personnel, we don't tell them, well, don't put out all the fires. They allocate their resources according to their ability to do their job. Every, that is the job of every single general manager and nothing will change in that regard. And if we think there's not enough resources, then we figure out.
And if we think there's not enough resources, then we figure out a way to come up with resources. That's overtime, that's new resources, then it's probably not a question for the Transportation Committee, it's probably a question for the Budget Committee. I also see Section 2 clarify that vehicles parked in these locations would be exempt from the CIO's outreach strategy as detailed in council file. I would read that as saying there is nothing about an instruction that we do that could contradict what might be otherwise case law if we have some obligation for, which we do have obligation for outreach and bringing people in. I think this has to do with the issue of posting. Is it enough to post a sign that's there permanently and has been there and was adopted by us and put up by us and paid for by us, or do we have to post something else? When I see these operations where we do this double posting, I find my, I look at it and I find myself thinking, are we wasting resources? Are we in this continual loop where we are so afraid to do our jobs that we don't do our job? And that goes for this horseshoe as well as folks out in the field. Is there confusion about what the rules are? Absolutely, there's confusion. Whose job is it to clarify the confusion? It's our job. We are the governing body of the City of Los Angeles. We shouldn't have cops out there wondering what the rules are and calling PAB to find out whether they're going to get beefed or in trouble. We shouldn't have DOT wondering what the rules are because we can't simply adopt a motion that says we're going to enforce the law. This is kind of a moment for us. This is kind of a moment for us to have debate, which is great, to disagree with each other, which is fantastic, and to be the governing body, to say that we adopted the rule, we're not changing a single rule, we're not adding a single street, we're not changing any condition, we're just saying, hey, the folks that work for us, to whom we have a responsibility for clarity, this is the rule. Let's go do our jobs. If you don't have enough resources, come tell us. If you have to figure out whether you're going to Main Street or First Street or Gaffey, figure it out. It says all of them, get to it. Just like if the long bell rings at a firehouse and they got three fires at a time, they can't do all three of them at a time, but they got to figure out which one they're going to. So, I really appreciate this debate, and I think it's a well-placed amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too appreciate this discussion and associate myself with the comments and the emotion that I felt emanating from Mr. McCosker with this central and irrefutable difference. This says we're going to tow any and all cars that are parked illegally, and everybody in this room, everybody at this horseshoe, everybody under the sound of my voice knows that's not true. We are not going to do that. So, the question is, somebody's going to pick winners and losers, and the question is, who's that going to be? And I'm telling you, like, no one's ever come to me and said, we have these 10 people to tow, we can only tow eight, let you pick which ones. So, it's not true that we're the policymakers. Somebody else is making the policy. So, for us to stand here and act like, oh, it's a sign, we put it up, and we just want to enforce it, and some ghost somewhere is stopping us from enforcing it, that is not what has been going down. As Ms. Rodriguez pointed out, different decisions are made at different levels, and I don't agree they are all made here at this council. Some of these are made by people that work for us and who decide this. Some of it is simply a matter of, and I've seen this in my district, if a business owner calls enough, eventually parking enforcement is going to do something. A business owner who doesn't call, like, when people park illegally in front of a church, nobody does anything until Sunday morning. That's just the fact. So, we shouldn't pretend like, oh, we have these laws, it's completely objective, like fires are. I agree with you that when there's a fire in the city, if you call the Fire Department, you'll get a firefighter in enough time, and that's true of a few other services, but it's not at all true with parking enforcement, and this motion tries to pretend as if it is, and I just think we ought to reject that and do the work to get it right.
So, Councilmember Yaroslavsky for the second time, followed by Councilmember McCosker for the second time. Okay. Councilmember Yaroslavsky passes. Councilmember McCosker.
I too will pass. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Lee?
Now, I'd like to call the question.
All right. So, with a call of the question is not debatable, it requires eight votes in order to call the previous question and close debate. So, that issue is now before, the issue of whether or not to call the previous question and close debate is now before us. That is not a debatable motion, so on that motion, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Nine ayes, five noes.
All right. So, with that, debate is closed on the amendment. The amendment is now before us, and debate is closed on the amendment, so we can now go to Amendment 36A for a vote. I will open the roll. On the amendment, this is on the Amendment 36A. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes, four noes.
All right. The amendment passes. That takes us now to Item 36 as amended. All right. And so, on that item, we can open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes, three noes.
All right. Very good.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
It's both of them. The issue at hand is, I never got my Braille for the special meeting, and that's just a little problem. I'd like to know how that could potentially be resolved. I didn't get the agenda in Braille for the special meeting.
Okay, right now, you're only allowed to speak about the agenda item itself.
I'm asking about the Braille and the agenda. It's doing with the agenda items not being done in Braille.
All right. Well, that doesn't speak to the substance of what's before us.
Fuck you asshole!
You are ordered removed from the council meeting for disrupting the meeting. So, pursuant to Rule 12, you are instructed to be silent for the remainder of this meeting as you leave the meeting because you're ordered removed pursuant to Rule 12. So, you're continuing to disrupt the meeting. For the sake of the record, the gentleman that I just removed is continuing to shout loudly after being ordered to be silent and ordered to be removed. So, have a nice day, sir. Next speaker.
I would like to speak on everything.
You'll have two minutes.
For the Item Number 37, I am here to support this motion. Right now, we are struggling with limited LAPD resources. We are limited LAPD personnel and with limited LAPD tech technology, limited LAPD equipment. So, this motion is to receive a donation to improve the working condition for our LAPD officer. It's something I always support, it's something I will always advocate for. Whenever I spoke with Sergeant Duarte numerous times, and Sergeant Duarte informed me, he can do the job much better, he can make sure people feel more safer, but he does not have the equipment, resources in order for Sergeant Duarte to be a Lieutenant Duarte. So, I am here to support LAPD and all the resources in order to fight crime, to provide more people with safer LAPD.
Speaker, you should move on to your next item.
For the next item is Number 38.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Sergeant Duarte is not on the agenda, so your time has expired. You need to speak to the agenda, and Sergeant Duarte is not on Item 38. So, have a seat. Next speaker.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Yeah. Well, you know DEI, all items in the fucking general comment.
You'll have two minutes for the item. This is a special meeting. Would you not take general public comment?
Yes, that's right. We're just testing you to see if you're learning from us.
Speak to the agenda.
Yes, Armenian. Now, we have Number 37. It's coming from the thank, the thankless $300,000 gift bribe donation. Fuck the LAPD and people like Duarte that work at the LAPD. See, I got it in, asshole. Fuck the gift. Fuck the assessment. The assessment? I'll give you the assessment at the LAPD. It's a toxic work environment. That's right, moany cow, it's terrible to work there. Lilian Caranza can't work in that environment, and Duarte thrives in that environment of corruption and evil. So, I say, no, $300,000 is too much for this tax-exempt item. I think they're inflating it to get tax benefits, something Paul Martin Krikorian's good at. And then we have 38, the no-good, dirty Home Depot buckethead. Yes. Talking to his communist comrade over there and dealing with his butt.
You're not speaking to the agenda item. That's your final warning.
Uh, hold on here. Help me out here, sure. He's the mover of Item 38, so I think we are on topic. Go ahead. Well, I mean, we're talking about fucking Charter Section 245B. How come the bucket head doesn't want to review the defecence of the bonds? Does Amelda even know what it means to do the defecence of the bonds? Tracy Park knows perfectly what this item is, and she's ducking her head, pretending she's not listening. So, I urge you, Nissus, to vote no on this item, review it, and finally, fuck you, Krikorian.
Your time has expired.
Caller with the last four digits, 1-9-6-4, please unmute yourself and state the items you'd like to speak to.
All right, thank you. My name is Rick Wang. I'd like to say, hey, hey, Candido's a monkey. He likes to give the monkey parts.
Okay, you're not speaking to the agenda item, and there's no general public comment, so you can speak to Items 37 and 38 if you would like.
Okay, well, I'm going to say general public. Candido's a little bit.
Okay, next caller, please. Sorry, you're disrupting our meeting. Next meeting, next caller, please. Hang up on this caller and take the next caller, please.
37 and 38, Richard Serrano.
Two minutes.
On Number 37, you're giving a donation, again, for LAPD. Funny, how many council people got money from the LAPD Federation or defense teams like Monica Rodriguez, Emilio Padilla to get elected? How are you giving money to people that help elect you? Sound like lobbyist stuff here. I mean, first, you're anti-LAPD, then you ask Emilio Padilla to change her stance on LAPD so she could get endorsement from LAPD, and here you are giving money back to them. This is the whole definition of a lobbyist, but I guess you can sell your souls if you have a serpent's thumb. That's what you do. You say one thing and do another. As long as you got elected and you get your check, you get to do what you want in that city council.
Yes, thank you. Item 37 and 38, please. Candido Maris, 818-399-1881.
You'll have two minutes.
Yes. Can I go? Hello?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. First of all, I'm 37, I'm all with supportive, LAPD, the more equipment they have, we're going to see great results when they were able to capture the four individuals who murdered the actor, and I hope the mother of the actor, young man, is okay with it, and she can find forgiveness, because, ma'am, let me tell you, those four families will suffer for the rest of their lives. The rest of their lives, they will be in mind to visit their children, to be checked in like animals. So, ma'am, I'm glad that they found, that LAPD found those individuals, but those families will suffer for the rest of their lives, and believe me, you would not want to go through that. So, as long as Los Angeles LAPD is doing their job, at which they are, we need to support them as much as possible. I contacted the FBI.
Speaker, you should move on to your next item.
And their threats. Mr. President, nice tie, Mr. Bloomfield, outstanding outfit. Again, 38, that's the harbor, one of our best assets. Mr. McCosker, I've been so impressed with you, boy, I'll tell you, you know how to fight a fight. So, again, I agreeable with 37 and 38, and the punk who keeps calling in on me, we're going to be off next week, bitch. Call me, call me. Let's get together. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Do any members wish to be heard on Item Number 37? That man is continuing to disrupt this meeting even after he's been excluded from the meeting pursuant to Rule 12. So, sergeants, please make sure that that man is not disrupting our meeting even from outside of the council chambers. If he needs to be escorted out of City Hall, let's do that, please.